The Minnesota side, and they had to have one representative from Middle St. Croix, and it was John Flegge for the last two years as they've been setting up, and he's no longer it, and we couldn't come up with a volunteer, so I'm going to be attending the meetings representing the Middle St. Croix at that, for the time being.
Well, thank you for doing that. Next is Police Chief Hanson.
Thanks. Mayor and Council, just a quick update on our social worker. We discussed last year about providing some funds, about getting an embedded social worker. Right now, as we talked before, they're still having staffing issues, just like any other agency, trying to recruit the right people. So as of right now, the goal is to get two up and running. There's only one, and that is currently assigned to the city of Woodbury. The sheriff, I just spoke with him today, and they're trying to get, they're interviewing tomorrow for another three candidates. So we're hoping, but it is a challenge far as recruiting and getting the right person for those, that kind of a job. So hopefully, end of summer, we'll have more information realistically by the time they get trained up. And then second, just a reminder, our winter parking regulations are still in effect till the end of the year, even though we've got this nice rain that may turn over to snow, they're saying, but till the end of the year, I'm sorry, till the end of the month. Sorry, till the end of the month, we have parking restrictions, so that's it.
Thank you. Next is Assistant City Administrator Henske.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm reporting the recycling award winner. The first award for the month of March goes to Montgomery Mesnick at 5323 Ojibwe Avenue North.
Thank you. Are there any other staff reports?
Only thing, Mayor and Council, I would note is it's your seat of the day, as I put the draft work session items for next week, trying to recall all the things that you folks want to touch base on. If I've missed something, just shoot me a note, and I will edit the agenda.
Thank you for the reminder. It's good to have the full list.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
It's long.
Yeah.
So move on to the visitor public comments section. This is a time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda to come forward. And if you could give your name.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Stacy Einck. I live in Baytown Township. I'm also the race director for the St. Croix Crossing Half Marathon, which is coming up on July 30th. So I understand in talking with, emailing back and forth with Administrator Johnson that you had passed it, so I'm not here with any issues or concerns. I just want to say thank you for doing that. And I also want to just give you, take a minute to just tell you a little bit about the benefits of this event for the entire area. We have been on a hiatus for a couple of years. It's been a little rough and bumpy for all of us, and we're really glad that the five races that we have actually are coming back. This one in particular comes through across the New Bridge. Well, anybody that's lived here more than five years is going to call it the New Bridge forever. So runners come across the New Bridge and then pass through Oak Park Heights on their way to the finish line, which is in downtown Stillwater. So the benefits of this race are many and varied, but we bring a lot of people in town. This race will have probably close to 1,500 to 2,000 runners. That's a lot of business that comes in. We have people coming from all over the country, so they're going to stay in hotels and eat at restaurants in the area and that kind of thing. But I think the biggest thing that has been missed throughout the last couple of years is the fact that the volunteer groups that we work with that runs water stations, marshaling, finish lines, start lines, deployment, all of those kinds of things, we haven't been able to be able to provide any kind of service for them. And our agreement with a lot of those is that they sign up for a time to come and help, and in turn, we make a donation directly to their organization. And it could be, it could be the Breast Cancer Three Day, it could be the Girl Scouts, a lot of youth organizations and things like that that have benefited over the years, and bring their group together, they organize their people, they know the system, they, you know, they deploy water stops and do all kinds of things like that. And I think from a community standpoint, that's really the heart of what we're able to do and to provide. So we're glad to be back in 2022, and hopefully, this will be one of many. We had the first run in 2019 of this race, and then we went on hiatus for a couple of years, so now we're back this year. So thank you very much, appreciate it, and I hope on July 30th, that if any of you are around, you'll come down and take a look at it. And maybe you want to run, walk, whatever you want to do, so appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And hopefully, the weather is beautiful.
Yeah, well, the first time we had perfect weather, so I'm hoping for this.
After this long, you want it to be perfect.
Yeah, very much so, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Then we have legislative update from Ann Lenteski from Lockridge Grendel, and Ann, I believe, is on remote.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm not sure if you can see me.
You're back.
I'm back.
How's the new grandbaby?
The grandbaby's fantastic. Thank you for asking, and nice to be with all of you this evening. As the mayor stated, it's been a busy time. I want to thank those of you who were able to come to some of the tours. I don't know that I've seen any of the councils or the mayor since the House and Senate toured and came to City Hall, and as you know, those were both very successful. I think if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, I was just going to update people on where our bills are at.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, and Colin Sheen's still at the Capitol. This is the first deadline week. Each week now, successively, will get worse. This is the first of three deadline weeks. Then they take a legislative break, and then it's six weeks till the finish. So we're about halfway through session. Really, nothing of note has happened. In fact, the relationship between the two sides of the aisle and the governor is kind of deteriorated in the last two or three weeks. You've probably seen that in the press. The holdup is the Senate Republicans would like to stop the unemployment tax from kicking in on employers by moving that tax exemption, and then the House Democrats want to pass hero pay for frontline workers like police, fire, nurses, et cetera. So they're at loggerheads, and folks had hoped that that bill would pass by March 15th, but it clearly missed it. So probably not voting well for early resolution to any big issues this session. Not a big deal, though. Generally, folks who are part of the legislature know that usually, all the big things get done in the last few days behind the scenes. So that certainly applies to us. We would be in the final week, no matter what. We are pushing very hard and have been very successful with your legislative delegations. Senator Housley and Rep. Sam Christiansen have gone too bad for us big time, and we had those tours, and we've been having hearings with them, the mayor's been testifying, Administrator Johnson has been at those hearings, and so things are going in the direction we want. We just have to be patient because the bonding bill will pass at the end, and that's why we're looking for the initial money to begin to redevelop the site when the Allen S. King plant closes, and we're looking for state help with that, so that the people of Oak Park Heights don't bear that burden. Similarly, we had a really good conversation with the Chair of the Capital Investment Committee in the Senate, who's also the former Senate Tax Chair, who is interested in assisting us with our local government aid, request a transition aid to begin to replace our lost tax base. I had a meeting with the Chair in the other body, the House Tax Chair, on this issue. He understood the concept that we're looking for with new local government aid and transition aid. You know, we're moving from being a city who contributes to fiscal disparities, who doesn't get local government aid. When we lose the Allen S. King plant's tax base, we will be needier in the formulas, but the formulas will not recognize our need fast enough. So we're trying to push a transition aid, a local government aid bill, through the attention of the legislature to get them to understand we need help sooner than was predicted. Our third bill, the mayor just mentioned, she testified in both the House and Senate, they were excellent hearings in both cases, really kind of a bill that should be quite non-controversial, just asked that the utility provide information to the city by the last day of 2025 that will let us know what their intent is with the site, what they'll remove, how they will clean up and remediate anything that needs to be cleaned up. So those bills were heard in both the House and Senate, very successful. The mayor made the case, along with Senator Housley and Rep. Sam Christiansen, that, you know, Oak Park Heights had expected the plan to close in 2040, it's now going to be 2028, and to plan for the community and keep residents informed on what's happening, that we need information by the end of 2025. So very good hearings on those. Wasn't a pee proposing them, so that, I think that went quite well. And so now, in all those cases, we are in a good, we're in a holding pattern, to be honest. We've received all of our hearings, and so we're well situated, but now we have to wait for all the big deals to get cut around us before we can try to squeeze our bills into omnibus bills. So that's my quick update, and if you have any questions, or Madam Mayor, if there's other things you want me to talk about, please let me know.
Council, do you have any questions for Ann?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be in touch. I understand there's two things coming up for hearings next week, but I haven't heard what dates, and I know what committees, just don't know what time.
Right, right. It's, and it's still going tonight, so that's why we're not, we're not with you. These are the long nights, and some of the early omnibus bills are actually going to get released this weekend on the House side, so we'll be looking at postings on Sunday. And if there's anything relevant for our work, I will make sure to reach out to Administrator Johnson and the mayor and let you know absolutely as soon as we know.
And then you and I need to talk, because I was contacted by the Public Utilities Commission about the Integrated Resource Plan, so when you have time during the week, give me a call.
I think, I think I'm on your calendar on Friday, so you may not know that yet, but I'm pretty sure I am, so I will link her up with you on that.
Sounds good. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for letting us work for Oak Park Heights legislative priorities, really appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approved bills and investments, check 67926 to 67970 for a total of $258,314.73. Approved City Council minutes for March 8th, 2022. Approved City Council minutes, March 18th, 2022. And changes in the American Rescue Plan Act allocation per the Treasury guidance.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lojergrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McHumber?
Yes.
And we have no public hearings tonight, and there is no old business, so we'll move on to new business, which is Minnehaha Transportation for a conditional use permit to allow a truck repair operation with outdoor storage of trucks at 5280 and 5288 Stagecoach Trail. Eric, since Scott's not here, can you take that?
I will do my best to just summarize as best I can. This condition use permit was reapplied for from Minnehaha Transportation. If you recall, in 2019, this was an application to the city to assume the use of that site for a number, for a truck repair facility, and they did commence use and did a number of improvements to the building. However, when the bus garage for the school district was looking for a space, they basically said, hey, we have a situation with them, they'd like to pursue. They vacated the former conditional use permit in favor of the new bus garage location there at that site, and now they would like to go back to the old use. And essentially, what staff has done is met again with the applicant, pretty much followed the old rules, the old reviews, and for the short time they did operate, we didn't see any material issues out there. any material issues out there. They did replace all the lights, we didn't receive any complaints. There are probably still some signage they did not install, and those, and all those similar conditions are back into the resolution. One of the more important things that we had talked about at the staff level was, were basically three things, limiting the number of trucks and whether they always have trailers or not, what have you, to a maximum of 85 units. That provides some control, I guess, of the site to not be so intensively used. And if they do want to reestablish their paint booth systems, that would have to be inside, and right now, it's not operational. And lastly, really, no outside storage. Other than that, we, the last concern we had, if you recall, was people showing up at night in parking and idling trucks and, and having it basically be a rest stop. And we did not see that in the first pass, to the best of my knowledge. And the applicant was very minimal to all the conditions and the times and the requirements. So basically, we're here again, and I think Mr. Freeman is here from the Planning Commission, so is Jennifer Van Dyke from the Planning Commission. I wasn't at the meeting, I was ill, and so if I have mischaracterized something, please correct me. And other than that, that the Planning Commission did recommend approval.
One question I have, and Tim or Jennifer, maybe you can answer that for me, because when I read the narrative in the beginning, it said that they were requesting hours of operation, six to nine on Monday and Friday, and eight to six on Saturday and Sunday, and then in the recommendations, it shows seven to nine, as opposed to six to nine Monday to Friday, and then eight to five on Saturday and Sunday. Was there any discussion regarding those times at the Planning Commission?
There was some discussion about it. Apparently, it, what was in there, the six o'clock thing was not according to the code. So I asked the applicant, I said, do you have a problem with that being changed? And they said, no.
Okay, good.
We just left it the way it was in the resolution.
Sounds good. That's the only question I had. Does anybody have any questions for Eric or Planning Commissioners?
I'll move the resolution. Or the approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shout by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Eric?
Thank you. Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Liljegren?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McHumber?
Yes. And are there any other council items or announcements?
Eric, could you give a little update about the streetlights?
Oh, I noticed. Sure. The, it was a little bit of a surprise to us staff, too, and the, as we drive around our, our community, you'll see the new street poles that are out there. The poles are the same, but the fixtures are different. They're now all LEDs, or they're transitioning to LEDs. The city largely leases these poles from, and these operations from Xcel Energy. They, they do all the maintenance, they replace all the heads if there's damage, so we don't have any real ownership of most of these. So I've not heard any, any issues or concerns with them yet. Some might not even be operational, as they've switched some of them out. I saw the email come from our Xcel folks, and I'm like, hmm, okay, that's coming. And then you drive around, and there's a lot of them up already. So if you haven't, if you haven't noticed it, maybe that's a good thing. And arguably, I think that's the, their goal is obviously to reduce their, their output, and that's, I guess, what it does, not to mention the, the maintenance time of dealing with those lights. If it's LED, it's just fewer change outs. I would speculate, maybe we'll see a small decrease in our, in our, in our lease rates. Maybe, they indicated two, three percent at most, but I'll believe it when I see it, so.
Just thinking, is there any, any idea what they're going to do with the fixtures out at, like, Botwells?
Well, the Botwells fixtures are a longer story.
Sorry.
Botwells, if I, it was even a little before my time. Botwells wanted these type, given type of fixtures, and, and I think the, the deal or the bargain struck was, okay, Botwells, you can have these, and we'll pay the bill, but if they're whacked or there's a damage to them, it's your, it's your time. So that's, that's generally how we proceeded over the last couple of decades.
Thank you. Any other council announcements? I think everybody got their registration form or the notice for the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in June, so if you're interested in going, register. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recording stopped.